The regular meeting of Bussaras City Council for May the first, 2018 is called to order. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, roll call please.
McKeever.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Wireball.
Here.
Trucca.
Here.
Sack.
Here.
Foote.
Here.
Shaw.
Here.
Okay, before you, you have the minutes for the April the seventeenth, 2018 regular meeting. I need a motion to accept these minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Wireball, second by Mr. Trucca. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion passed. This is where we grant permission for visitors to speak. Does anyone wish to address council this evening? No one? Moving on to communications and petitions.
I just have one. This was addressed through the mayor from Mr. Kevin Locke of Upper Sandusky on April nineteenth. Dear Mayor Jeff, I would like to request your consideration of a commendation for Mr. Kevin DeTrey, the Bussaras Airport Manager, for his outstanding service and dedication to the highest aviation service standard. Highway and airway are our economic infrastructure. His performance is the best in this region, if not the best of Ohio. As I'm a pilot based at the Bussaras Airport, I witnessed Mr. DeTrey's contribution and dive into our community. He opens the office from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. seven days a week. Very seldom if he has to leave the office, there will be staff or any need of emergency that rises. He always goes beyond the call of duty to take good care of any details of the airport and every aviator. Under tight budget, he is able to provide one of the most friendly airport services in this region. We are very fortunate to have Mr. DeTrey's dedication and your leadership to Bussaras. Thank you very much for your great service for Bussaras and surrounding communities. If you have any questions, please feel free to call myself, 419-247-7777. Best regards, Kevin Locke, pilot, Bussaras Airport Commissioner, CEO of Men O' Iron Chiropractic and Acupuncture, owner of Peaceful Families LLC, and owner of Locke LLC. And that is the end of the call.
Yes, and every word about this is true. We are very, very blessed to have Mr. DeTrey out there. And we will make sure that he gets a copy of this letter. And also, it would probably be nice if we sent a letter from us to get signatures for that. And say thank you for his service, because too often we just take it for granted. But he does provide a great service for us. I need a motion then to accept and file this letter.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Mr. Trucca to accept the letter. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion passed. Thank you. Standing committee reports. Mr. Myers, would you get us started, please?
All right, Bussaras City Council Joint Regular Committees from Thursday, April nineteenth, 2018. Members present, Mark McKeever, Kevin Myers, Dan Wireball, Bruce Trucca, Doug Foote, and Andrew Shaw. Item one, Bussaras City Joint Regular Committees meeting was called to order by Myers at six o'clock p.m. Item number two, public participation. John Kime of the Bussaras City School District Board thanked council for its work in providing a school resource officer for the district and spoke of the need for a second one. Item number three was the Order of Committee Business. Health and Safety Committee on Thursday, April nineteenth, 2018. Members present, Mark McKeever, Bruce Trucca, Andrew Shaw, and Kevin Myers, Chair. Item number one, Bratwurst Festival Street Closures. As Assistant Director of the Bratwurst Festival, Committee Chair Myers turned this portion of the meeting over to Acting Chairman McKeever. In a letter addressed to council dated April tenth, the festival asked that several streets in the city be closed for the festival August sixteenth through eighteenth. Shaw made a motion to request legislation, making the requested closures with a second by Trucca. Motion passed by voice vote with Myers abstaining. Item two, ODOT paving project. Myers resumed chairmanship of the meeting. The Ohio Department of Transportation is seeking consent legislation for portions of two paving projects, resurfacing of US Route thirty in both directions from the Old Lincoln Highway to zero point zero eight miles west of Stetza Road, as well as a small section of State Route ninety-eight from the city's North Corporation Line to zero point two-two miles southwest of Beech Grove Road, and resurfacing and pavement repairs on State Route four from the city's South Corporation Line to Sandusky Avenue. No city funds will be required for the resurfacing of the US thirty. On the State Route four project, ODOT will cover one hundred percent of the engineering and environmental studies costs and eighty percent of construction costs, with the city responsible for twenty percent of the construction cost. McKeever made a motion to request consent legislation for ODOT's repaving of US thirty with a second by Trucca. Motion passed by voice vote. Shaw made a motion to request consent legislation for ODOT's repair and repaving of State Route four with a second by McKeever. Motion passed by voice vote. Number three, Myers recessed the Health and Safety Committee at six oh nine p.m.
Okay, any questions or comments regarding this, these minutes? We have basically, as far as the Bratwurst Festival is concerned, the normal closings that we've been doing for several years. Right?
Yes.
Okay. And there isn't very much difference in that. You'll notice tonight that the legislation for this is taking on a new look. Yes, I am stretching this out until Mr. Trucca gets back. It's going to take on a little bit of a different look, the legislation. The Law Director contacted me and said it was getting too burdensome the way it was, one long paragraph. And we streamlined it. It's a format that we'll be able to use with any other group or project that's coming into town that needs to close streets. So, okay, thank you. Then we'll move on to the Service Committee. Mr. Trucca?
Service Committee met April nineteenth at six oh nine p.m. Members present were Dan Wireball, Doug Foote, Andrew Shaw, and myself. Number one, water line expansion. The Service Committee received a letter dated April seventeenth from the administration asking, number one, if the committee wishes to expand water lines outside the city limits. Number two, will rematch residential rates within city rates. Number three, change the ordinance to allow for new rates. Number four, agree to a three-tiered cap fee. And five, if the committee remains interested in transferring the county water and sewer district to the city. It was explained that for this evening's meeting, the administration is just looking for guidance on whether the committee wishes to expand water lines outside the city and where, so that already appropriated engineering funds can be expended to draw up a plan. It was noted that extending a line to the vicinity of State Route nineteen and a hundred and County Road thirty-five could be accomplished simply with city crews and that dozens of homeowners in the area have requested city water. Concerns were expressed about expanding the line for a single locality before an overall strategy is agreed upon. Foote made a motion giving the administration the okay to have engineering plans drawn up to extend the water line in the vicinity of State Route nineteen and a hundred and County Road thirty-five with a second by Shaw. Motion passed by voice vote. No legislation is required. The matter will be brought before a full council. Trucca recessed the Service Committee at six twenty eight p.m.
Any questions or comments regarding the minutes? And one of the things that we do need, we need a full council vote on this water line expansion, which would be, as it is stated here, giving the administration the okay to have engineering plans drawn up to extend a water line in the vicinity of State Route nineteen and a hundred and County Road thirty-five. So we need a motion to that.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Mr. Foote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion passed. Thank you very much. Moving on to the Finance Committee. Mr. Wireball, will you?
Why not?
Why not?
Bussaras City Council Regular Joint Committee Finance Committee met on Thursday, April nineteenth, 2018 from six twenty-eight to six thirty-five p.m. Members present, Kevin Myers, Andrew Shaw, and myself as Acting Chair. First off was the School Resource Officer in Bussaras Elementary. The Bussaras City School District has approved a memorandum of understanding with the city and the Bussaras Police Department to add a second School Resource Officer to the district. The school district's board has approved the expenditure of sixty thousand forty dollars to fund the position, with the officer being stationed in the elementary school. The money would go into the general fund. The police department would not need to hire a new officer to fill this position. Myers made a motion to request legislation accepting sixty thousand forty dollars from the Bussaras City School District for installation of a second School Resource Officer in the district, under terms spelled out in the memorandum of understanding with a second by Shaw. Motion passed by voice vote. Second was the water line expansion. Shaw made a motion giving the city administration the okay to have engineering plans drawn up to extend the water line in the vicinity of State Routes nineteen and a hundred and County Road thirty-five with a second by Myers. Motion passed by voice vote. No legislation is required. The matter will be brought before the full council. Wireball recessed the Finance Committee at six thirty-five p.m.
Any questions regarding the finance minutes? Okay, if you'd like this, I'm sorry.
I don't have any questions, Doc. Is there a way to bring up this letter that was given to all of us by the way about water line expansion?
Do you want to do it tonight, or do you want to bring it into the committee meeting on Thursday?
Okay.
Is that in committee for discussion?
Okay.
Okay.
But why are they receiving from that, Mr. Rule Water Mayor?
Oh, he's talking about when he was showing Apple.
Okay, recently?
Yeah, it was just yesterday.
Yeah, and I think that that's something that the thing we're discussing on Thursday evening. Because I'll have more information about that.
Okay, where I was, where I was going with it, I was hoping that maybe, instead of being this one council person, I was hoping to be with the committee, being such an important issue. I would like to see the Service Committee being a part of that.
Yeah, of course. Okay. Of course, yeah. Madam President, yeah, we, you know, we've run everything by you guys, you know. And this would be no exception.
We'll continue with that, okay. Okay, who was? Mr. Wireball? Would you like to finish us up?
Public participation. John Kime of the Bussaras City School District Board thanked the Finance Committee for requesting legislation to accept sixty thousand forty dollars from the school district for installation of a second School Resource Officer in the district. Dan Wireball asked for a motion to adjourn the regular committees, motion by McKeever and second by Myers, to adjourn at six thirty-six p.m. Motion passed.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, traffic commission. Anyone, we don't have any minutes this evening. Does anyone have any traffic questions about the thing we put to the mayor this evening? Can we talk about Southern Avenue? It's getting paved.
As we speak, they have to make some progress.
They're moving right along. And, you know, I think probably the base, the thing that I've seen is that the road is closed. Please, the road is closed. Don't try to drive down Southern Avenue. A lot of pavement, yes. It's been amazing, the cars that are just flying, I mean, since they built it, it's flat.
Maybe we should put some speed bumps there.
Yeah, I think so. And so just stay off of Southern Avenue until we get it done. Okay. I need a motion to accept committee minutes and related committee reports collectively.
So moved.
Second? Motion by Mr. Foote, second by Mr. Myers. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion passed. Report to city officers. Mayor Reese?
Oh, thank you, Madam President. First of all, I think I want to single out some special volunteers in the committee. A show of hands here. Who among the council members took part in the lady softball or baseball?
They wouldn't let me play.
But you played football when it was run by volunteer, correct?
So my point is, you know, these programs that are run, you know, a long time together, they're all run by volunteers. And they're very unselfish. And I got to, well, with my granddaughter, it was an honor to throw out the first pitch at Saturday. It was very cold, very cold and windy. But there was, all the diamonds were busy, there was a lot of screaming kids, a lot of screaming parents. Life is good when baseball season's on again.
That's right.
Then we went over to Kids Kingdom for a while, you know, can't leave without playing at Kids Kingdom. And that's a beautiful facility, too, over there, so, a lot of fun. We had a lot of fun. My granddaughter loved it, a lot of kids were playing a lot, too. Looking for a big year for Park. All the people that have made those parks possible, you know, we need to thank them. You know, the people, like the city workers that keep it going and the volunteers. Lions Club, Lions Field, that's an excellent park, too. Speaking of preparing for the future, we celebrated our second annual Arbor Day on Friday. Planted four trees this year. Three London plane trees. And we planted a honey locust at the elementary school, just like we did last year. Planted trees for many reasons. Beauty, shade, energy efficiency, stormwater savings. But most of all, we plant them so our future citizens can enjoy them. Planting trees and caring for them shows somebody who care about how we look now and how we're going to look well into the future. One thing we did notice, looking, we have what's called a banded tree ordinance. So it was last updated in nineteen sixty-four. And it needs a little updating. Some of the trees on there have new cultivars that, you know, that would allow them to be eliminated. In other words, they don't have spikes coming out of them anymore that might poke somebody in the head. They're all, the state of Ohio also recently added some trees to the banned list. And we'd like to, the tree board will be here on Thursday night to talk about updating that list. So what I would like to do is refer that to public lands and buildings. And one more thing, Congressman Jordan stopped into town today and made a chat with Congressman about, maybe talked about an article that was in the Wall Street Journal today about attracting, how do you attract people to your community? Everybody has the same problems, a shortage of workers. There were a lot of jobs opening. So there's some innovative things that are done. I know that this community has already been doing some innovative things. The bank has a coming home scholarship that they started last year. But the article in the Journal is about, you know, just doing some things like helping people with loans and throwing those things. We had a nice discussion on that. And we stopped by Rotary for a short while, too. So always grateful for this concern for our community. And I think that's it for you. Thank you, Madam President.
Okay, thank you. Any questions and or comments for the mayor this evening?
Well, I got a couple. Whatever happened, well, I guess this is forever, but whatever happened to the tree ordinance? Did we, we didn't complete that, did we? We read through that.
It's in committee?
It's in committee.
It's still in committee?
It is in committee. There was a lot of things going on.
Well, shouldn't that be part of the banned tree?
Yeah, we could, we could.
I mean, I would think that would be incorporated in there somehow. I don't know.
Can certainly do that. There was just so many things going on. This first quarter, we decided to, with the water expansion, with EMS and some of the things.
I just thought maybe I missed the meeting or something and we completed that.
I don't think you missed any meetings.
And Mr. Jordan always comes to town and I never know it.
I suppose I found out yesterday.
Yeah, okay, I'd just like to make that point.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, last, one other time, I seen him come in and he walked past my office. And he walked past again. Apparently he was lost, so, but he found you guys.
Yeah. He was in, well, he's back in the district. I mean, today, I think he was in Galleon, Marion, and Bussaras all in his face for about four hours, so.
So as we find out, we can send a notification. We'll do that from now on. Like sometimes it's short notice when we find out that he's coming, so. So I need to refer the banned tree ordinance into public lands and buildings. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Foote, second by Ms. Sack. Put the banned trees ordinance back into public lands and buildings. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion passed. Thank you. The Safety Directors report?
Yes, I have that right here. Council passed resolution number two oh six dash two zero one seven. To apply for a bike path grant, the city's portion is twenty-two thousand dollars. This needs to be referred to the Finance Committee. Bond anticipation note. The administration would like to discuss the capital improvements that are needed at the park, the public lands and buildings, and Finance Committees. This was referred to council in December of 2017. Pioneer students were here on April twentieth. There were about forty of them. They worked in Allmiller Park and City Hall helping with the spring cleanup. It's always much appreciated. Katie Fisk heads that up. We had a nice turnout again this year. Like to thank the following restaurants for donating pizza to help feed these students. Suburban Lanes, Pizanello's, Little Caesar's, and Pizza Hut. Unity, unity speaks volumes. Service line warranties. You know, I have certainly, I belong to this program. I think it's a great program. There's another letter coming out to the residents of Bussaras about signing up for the water and sewer lateral insurance program. This information is also available on the city website. We had to know, but city residents are responsible for the line all the way out to the sewer, so. And all the streets are going to be dug up this year, a lot of vibration. And there's a, you know, there's a chance that we will have some fractures there. So make sure you, you know, take advantage of that good program. It's very reasonable. Ohio Polytech recently completed the purchase of the old Swan River Building. And we want to thank them for their community involvement. Brad and Matt, they were in town, and below D from Tensas, Kentucky. Had a really nice dinner with them a couple of weeks ago. And they love Bussaras, they love coming here, they love people, they invest in people, they're investing in this community. And they gave us mulch. And you wouldn't have to ask. Say, how much mulch do you need? And saving us a substantial amount of money. So the mulch we had, like the kids gave them, some of the parts, it's fantastic mulch that they make themselves, so. And if you've seen them, thank them. Fishing derby is this week, Saturday, from eleven thirty to, excuse me, eight-thirty to eleven at Crossroads, usual spot. I heard at Rotary today that for the grand prize, Mr. Myers, Mr. Shaw, correct me if I'm wrong, there's four secret point tickets. Okay, all right. To the winners, okay, so then come on out. The EPA administrative order is still an ongoing process. Laura McGinnis of Arcades was here a couple of weeks ago. We have to report to the EPA every six months. Our next reporting is due in August. You all know about Southern Avenue. We're very happy to report that it's coming right along. Mill and pave project was awarded to Bussaras Road Materials. Affected this week, right when we went from winter to summer. The park facilities are staffed and the restrooms will be open. Our cleanup day begins next Monday, goes through the end of the week. You will be allowed an additional six bags of garbage for a total of twelve bags. As a reminder, everything must be wrapped in plastic. And we're taking applications for a seasonal boom mower. And everybody's not sure what a boom mower is. It's the one that does the sides of hills and has an arm, you know. Most of you may know that, but please stop by our office, pick up an application. And I think that is the end of Mr. Agnew's report.
Okay, any questions or comments regarding the report?
I don't, it doesn't, it doesn't go, well, it kind of goes along with this, but the service line warnings reminded me that I just wanted to make everybody out there aware that we have the gas and electric aggregation. And I just wanted to give everyone a little, what happened to me? Constellation is the company, right? And I was with Constellation and my bill, we're on the budget, and it come out to a hundred and four, went up to a hundred and four dollars. And like, oh, wow, you know. So I got a hold of Jeff Wagner and said, what's going on? Well, we find out, come to find out, I was with Constellation, but it was another program that I had signed up for before. So all this time, for however long this has been, I thought I was in the aggregation program, and I wasn't. Well, I got straightened out. Now, instead of a hundred and four dollars, my budget is now sixty-eight dollars.
Wow.
Now, that's quite a big difference, so. So I just wanted to let the people out there know, check in, call that number on your bill. It should say Constellation down there. And because I told my receptionist, you know, and she's right on the phone trying to get hers, you know, because she was with another company. So hopefully that'll save some of the people. I've been wanting to say that.
I'm glad you shared that.
Absolutely. If I can take, that's a type of business that, oh, I don't know how I should say this. Maybe the sales tactics are a little high pressure. I don't want to say it's scrupulous, but you may not know all that. But make sure you ask the right questions. And if you don't know the right questions to ask, please call us at City Hall, we will help you.
Yeah, Jeff helped me out.
Many of the rates that are coming out now are low rates, guaranteed for three months. You can either find print, and then there goes variable, and then you're in some trouble. So we have some very good rates.
Well, and the easy way to tell is on the website, is on the city's website that tells what the rates are. Point something, whatever, I don't know what it is, but it's on there. Or I guess you could call the office and they would let you know what the rate is. If you don't have that rate, you need to get.
Okay, other questions or comments? Okay, then I need a motion to refer the bike path grant to, does that need to go to public lands and buildings, San Finance? I think it does, because it's going to be okay in the bike path and the Finance Committee. So we need to put it to both. And then also, the bond anticipation note is already in committee? Okay. So the first one, we need a motion then to put the bike path, public lands and building and finance. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sack, second by Mr. Shaw. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion passed. Thank you. I saw that with the fishing derby. It used to be years ago, United Commercial Travelers used to do that for a lot of the ones in here. And my brother absolutely loved it. And it was, it's such a great thing that, to get everybody out there and participating in that and something that they may not do otherwise.
See, you brought up United Commercial Travelers, and that brought it back to Little League. That's Uncle Charlie's home. It's all of us kids when we were in Little League.
Mr. Mayor?
Mayor Wilson is in charge of it again.
Is he?
Yeah. He loves doing it, so.
Moving on, Law Director, Mr. Allen.
Thank you, Madam President. Telling you, with the mayor, Mr. Wireball was saying, 'Tis the season for the door-to-door sales reps. And if somebody comes to your door and tells you that they absolutely have to see your electric or gas bill, you do not have to ever show anybody your electric or gas bill. And so don't fall victim to that. And if you do feel like you've suffered in an appropriate high-pressure sales situation or been otherwise treated badly by one of those door-to-door salespeople, please call City Hall and call the police dispatch. We do monitor those door-to-door salesmen and we do, from time to time, review their permit situations. This Friday, first movie day at the park. Yay! This one's sponsored by Bussaras City Council. So, you know, there'll be very, very short speech before the film. I was either going to volunteer, but somebody can give a little very short introduction to the movie. And then sometime, probably between eight thirty-nine when it gets dark, we'll kick off the movie. And it should be a fun event. We'll have some things going on there, so come out and check it out. One referral, we do need to refer, just reminded me this evening, you need to refer our Enterprise Zone and CRA legislation. There's some updating. And I would like for the committee to consider not worrying about it until our next meeting. And I would like for the committee to consider not worrying about it until our next meeting on the 17th, to allow time for representative, the actual company that actually set it up. We met with them last week and they've given us some insights to update some things that need to be done with this organization since then and some other things. So if we do talk about it on the 17th, and everybody's all right with that, then I'll get ahead and get our schedule up and give us a hurry.
Which one is that? Economic Development.
That is, yeah, that's economic development.
Yeah.
Okay, then I need a motion then to place the enterprise zone and CRA legislation into Economic Development Committee. Mr. Fouts, I need a second. Mr. McKeever. Motion by Mr. Fouts, second by Mr. McKeever to place enterprise zone and CRA legislation into Economic Development, but will not be brought up until next meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Thank you. The auditor, who was silent last time, was not this time.
No, I'm not silent. I'm sorry. You do have the statement of cash position for April 30th. Also, the income tax revenues, I know everyone's been waiting for this. April compared to April of last year was up 4%. And here today, we're up 2% over last year. So that's good news. Also have the revenue calories and budget. If those are over, if you have any questions, you can get a fee anytime. And then I have the ever-popular referrals. I have, I need two appropriations. One in, from unappropriated funds in 286, the 2018 Victims of Crime Act, under the Victim Advocate category, item materials and supplies in the amount of $1,489.92 for training and education. This is a grant that our new victim advocates and Caldwell applied for for training. He will be going to, I believe, in August. This is an 80-20 grant, so we need to appropriate the 20% in the general fund, under Program Seven General Government, under the law director, materials and supplies in the sum of $372.48. Here again, this is for training and education for the victim advocate. I also need a couple of transfers within the general fund, Program Seven General Government. This is under the law director, a transfer of $9,000 from personal services to contractual services for a contract with the county prosecutor's office to handle city prosecutions for three months. And also within the 2018 Ohio Victims Assistance Grant, this is separate from Fund 286, this is Fund 285, under Victim Advocate, a transfer of $2,500 from personal services to materials and supplies. And this is for local training that he's going to be taking and also some new office equipment.
Thank you. Questions, if I didn't hear this? No? Okay, so then we have, let's do this in two things, or two motions. One for the appropriation for the victim advocate, training and education to both funds, from the 286 Victim, 2018 Victim of Crime Act fund and the general fund, for the other 20% of the grant.
So moved. Second?
Mr. McKeever, second. By Mr. Myers?
No.
Other way around? Motion by Mr. Myers, second by Mr. McKeever. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. And then we need two transfers. One is within the law director's office. This stays right within their fund, $9,000 from the personal services to contractual services. And then with the Ohio Victims Assistance Grant, a transfer of $2,500 from personal services to materials and supplies. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second?
Motion by Mr. Fouts, second by Mr. Shock. For the transfers, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Thank you. All else is quiet in the auditor's office?
Yes, we survived tax season. I'm trying to start cleaning in my office. We are continuing the audit. The gas conversion is close to being complete. And audit's coming up Friday to pin up work papers and to go over that. And the CAFER is in the final stages, so that should be.
Will be opened. Our cleanup day begins next Monday, goes through the end of the week. You will be allowed an additional six bags of garbage for a total of 12 bags. As a reminder, everything must be wrapped in plastic. And we're taking applications for a seasonal boom mower. And everybody's not sure what a boom mower is. It's the one that does the sides of hills and has an arm, you know. Most of you maybe know that, but please stop by our office, pick up an application. And I think that is the end of Mr. Agnew's report.
Okay, any questions or comments? Are you ready to report?
Well, I don't, it doesn't, it doesn't go, well, it kind of goes along with this, but the service line warnings reminded me that I just wanted to make everybody out there aware that we have the gas and electric aggregation. And I just wanted to give everyone a little, what happened to me? Constellation is the company, right? And I was with Constellation and my bill, we're on the budget, and it come out to $104, went up to $104. And like, oh wow, you know? So I got ahold of Jeff Wagner and said, what's going on? Well, we find out, come to find out, I was with Constellation, but it was another program that I had signed up for before. So all this time, for however long this has been, I thought I was in the aggregation program. And I wasn't. Well, I got straightened out. Now, instead of $104, my budget is now $68.
Wow.
Now, that's quite a big difference. So I just wanted to let the people out there know, check in, call that number on your bill. It should say Constellation down there. And because I told my receptionist, you know, and she's right on the phone trying to get hers, you know, because she was with another company. So hopefully that'll save some of the people. I've been wanting to say that.
Glad you shared that.
If I can take, that's a type of business that, oh, I don't know how I should say this. Maybe the sales tactics are a little high pressure. I don't want to say it's scrupulous, but you may not know all that. But make sure you ask the right questions. And if you don't know the right questions to ask, please call us at City Hall. We will help you.
Yeah, Jeff helped me out.
Many of the rates that are coming out now are low rates, guaranteed for three months. You're either fine print, and then there goes variables. And then you're in some trouble. So we have some very good rates.
Well, and the easy way to tell is on the website, isn't it? It's on the city's website that tells what the rates are. Point something, whatever, I don't know what it is, but it's on there. Or I guess you could call the office and they would let you know what the rate is. If you don't have that rate, you need to get.
Okay, other questions or comments? Okay, then I need a motion to refer the bike path grant to, does that need to go to public lands and buildings and finance? I think it does, because it's going to be okay in the bike path and the finance committee. So we need to put it to both. And then also the bond anticipation note, that's okay, is already in committee? Okay. So the first one, we need a motion then to put the bike path, public lands and buildings and finance. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sack, second by Mr. Shock. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Thank you. I saw that with the fishing derby. It used to be years ago, United Commercial Travelers used to do that for a lot of the ones in here. And my brother absolutely loved it. And it was, it's such a great thing that, to get everybody out there and participating in that, and something that they may not do otherwise.
See, you brought up United Commercial Travelers, and that brought it back to Little League. That's Uncle Charlie's mother. It's all of us kids when we were in Little League. Mayor Wilson is in charge of it again.
Is he?
Yeah. He loves doing it, so.
Moving on, law director, Mr. Allen.
Thank you, Madam President. Telling you on the way to the mayor's wireball, we're saying, tis the season for the door-to-door sales reps. And if somebody comes to your door and tells you that they absolutely have to see your electric or gas bill, you do not have to ever show anybody your electric or gas bill. And so don't fall victim to that. And if you do feel like you've suffered in an appropriate high-pressure sales situation or been otherwise treated badly by one of those door-to-door salespeople, please call City Hall and call police dispatch. We do monitor those door-to-door salesmen and we do, from time to time, review their permit situations. This Friday, first movie day in the park.
Yay!
This one's sponsored by Bucyrus City Council. So, you know, there'll be very, very short speech before the film. I wonder if you're gonna volunteer, but somebody can get a little very short introduction to the movie. And then sometime, probably between 8:30 and 9:00, when it gets dark, we'll kick off the movie. And it should be a fun event. We'll have some things going on there, so come out and check it out. One referral, we do need to refer, Mr. Fouts reminded me this evening, you need to refer our enterprise zone and CRA legislation. It is some updating. And I would like for the committee to consider not worrying about it until our next meeting on the 17th, to allow time for representative, the actual company that actually set it up. We met with them last week and they've given us some insights to update some things that need to be done with this organization since then and some other things. So if we do talk about it on the 17th, and everybody's all right with that, then I'll get ahead and get our schedule up and give us a hurry.
Which one is that? Economic Development.
That is, yeah, that's economic development.
Yeah.
Okay, then I need a motion then to place the enterprise zone and CRA legislation into Economic Development Committee. Mr. Fouts, I need a second. Mr. McKeever. Motion by Mr. Fouts, second by Mr. McKeever to place enterprise zone and CRA legislation into Economic Development, but will not be brought up until next meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Thank you. The auditor, who was silent last time, was not this time.
No, I'm not silent. I'm sorry. You do have the statement of cash position for April 30th. Also, the income tax revenues, I know everyone's been waiting for this. April compared to April of last year was up 4%. And here today, we're up 2% over last year. So that's good news. Also have the revenue calories and budget. If those are over, if you have any questions, you can get a fee anytime. And then I have the ever-popular referrals. I have, I need two appropriations. One in, from unappropriated funds in 286, the 2018 Victims of Crime Act, under the Victim Advocate category, item materials and supplies in the amount of $1,489.92 for training and education. This is a grant that our new victim advocates and Caldwell applied for for training. He will be going to, I believe, in August. This is an 80-20 grant, so we need to appropriate the 20% in the general fund, under Program Seven General Government, under the law director, materials and supplies in the sum of $372.48. Here again, this is for training and education for the victim advocate. I also need a couple of transfers within the general fund, Program Seven General Government. This is under the law director, a transfer of $9,000 from personal services to contractual services for a contract with the county prosecutor's office to handle city prosecutions for three months. And also within the 2018 Ohio Victims Assistance Grant, this is separate from Fund 286, this is Fund 285, under Victim Advocate, a transfer of $2,500 from personal services to materials and supplies. And this is for local training that he's going to be taking and also some new office equipment.
Thank you. Questions, if I didn't hear this? No? Okay, so then we have, let's do this in two things, or two motions. One for the appropriation for the victim advocate, training and education to both funds, from the 286 Victim, 2018 Victim of Crime Act fund and the general fund, for the other 20% of the grant.
So moved. Second?
Mr. McKeever, second. By Mr. Myers?
No.
Other way around? Motion by Mr. Myers, second by Mr. McKeever. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. And then we need two transfers. One is within the law director's office. This stays right within their fund, $9,000 from the personal services to contractual services. And then with the Ohio Victims Assistance Grant, a transfer of $2,500 from personal services to materials and supplies. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second?
Motion by Mr. Fouts, second by Mr. Shock. For the transfers, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Thank you. All else is quiet in the auditor's office?
Yes, we survived tax season. I'm trying to start cleaning in my office. We are continuing the audit. The gas conversion is close to being complete. And audit's coming up Friday to pin up work papers and to go over that. And the CAFER is in the final stages, so that should be finished in June.
Okay, thank you. You received the treasurer's report at last meeting for March of 2018. I need a motion to accept and file that report?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Mr. Myers to accept the treasurer's report for March of 2018. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Police chief's not with us this evening. Fire chief is not with us this evening. I need a motion to accept the city officers' reports.
So moved. Second?
Motion by Mr. Fouts, second by Mr. Shock to accept the city officers' reports. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. This is where we have visitors input regarding reports of standing or special committees and of city officers. Anyone wish to address council this evening? No one? Moving on, for consideration of proposed legislation for the first time.
We have four pieces of legislation. They are all resolutions. Resolution number 222, 2018. We'll read through section three on this. The following resolution enacted by the city of Bucyrus in Crawford County, Ohio, here and after referred to as the city in the manner of the stated described project and declaring an emergency, be it resolved by the council of the city of Bucyrus, state of Ohio, two-thirds of all members elected thereto concurring section one, project description, PID number 77480, whereas the state has identified the need for the described project. To perform resurfacing of U.S. Route 30 in both directions from Oldhampton Highway to 0.08 miles west of St. Sir Road, all of the Bucyrus bike paths will be resurfaced. In addition, there will be a small section of State Route 98 resurfaced in this project from the north corporation limit of Bucyrus to 0.22 miles southwest of Beach Grove Road. If this project is currently scheduled for the 2019 construction season, now therefore be it ordained by the city of Bucyrus in Crawford County, Ohio, section two consent statement, being in the public interest, the city gives consent to the director of transportation to complete the above described project. And section three, the cooperation statement, the city shall cooperate with the director of transportation in the above described project as follows. One, the city gets consent for the above improvement. Two, no funds are required from the city except that the city agrees to assume and bear 100% of the total cost for adding construction items requested by the city and not necessary for the improvement as determined by the state and federal highway administration. That is referred back to health and safety. Resolution number 223, 2018, I will read through section three on this as well. The following resolution enacted by the city of Bucyrus in Crawford County, Ohio, here and after referred to as the city in the manner of the stated described project and here and after referred to as the City in the manner of the stated described project and declaring an emergency, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Visirus, State of Ohio, two-thirds of all members elected thereto concurring, Section One, Project Description, PID Number one-oh-one-zero-one-three-five-six, whereas the State has identified the need for the described project. City of Visirus Urban Paving, the purpose of this project is to perform pavement repairs and resurface a state route in the City of Visirus, CRA State Route Four, six-point-seven-two, the South Corporation Line to eight-point-four-five, which is South Standeski Avenue. Construction is tentatively scheduled to begin in the summer of twenty-nineteen, now therefore be it ordained by the City of Visirus in Crawford County, Ohio, Section Two Consent Statement, being in the public interest, the City gives consent to the Director of Transportation to complete the above-described project. Section Three Cooperation Statement, the City shall cooperate with the Director, the Director of Transportation for the portion of this project within the Visirus Corporation Limit as follows. One, ODOT agrees to assume and bear one-hundred percent of the preliminary engineering costs and environmental studies costs. Two, ODOT agrees to assume and bear eighty percent of the roadway construction and construction engineering costs. Three, the City agrees to assume and bear twenty percent of the roadway construction and construction engineering costs. Four, ODOT and the City agree that the following roadway construction items are eligible for eighty percent ODOT, twenty percent City funding, pavement planning, asphalt overlay, treatment of shoulder, height adjustment to existing guardrail, pavement markings temporary and fast dry adjustments to catch basins, manholes, valve box boxes, et cetera, mailbox supports and approaches, and work zone signs. Five, ODOT agrees to assume and bear one-hundred percent of the bridge related costs. Six, the City further agrees to pay one-hundred percent of the cost of the following construction items, pavement repair, partial and full depth, curbs, curb ramps, sidewalks, city-owned signs, guardrail replacement efficient existing and required new locations, and those items requested by the City which are determined to be unnecessary by the State or Federal Highway Administration for the remainder of this project, and Fund Seven, a preliminary cost estimate for the City's share of this project is one-hundred-and-eleven thousand dollars for construction costs and forty-five, four thousand five hundred dollars for construction and engineering inspection, that is referred back to Health and Safety. Resolution Number Two-twenty-four, twenty-eighteen, authorizing and directing the Public Service Safety Director of the City of Visirus, Ohio, to ban all vehicular trafficking, including bicycles and stateboards, except authorized emergency personnel, for the twenty-eighteen Visirus Broadworth Festival according to the schedule set forth herein, further authorizing and directing the Chief of Police to make necessary arrangements for the rerouting of traffic on federal, state, local highways and roadways, that's referred back to Health and Safety. And Fund Resolution Number Two-twenty-five, twenty-eighteen, authorizing and directing the Mayor of the City of Visirus, Ohio, to accept sixty thousand forty dollars from the Visirus School District for the appointment of a second School Resource Officer from the Visirus Police Department in the School District, and that is referred back to plan.
Uh, I need a motion to accept this as the first reading.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Myers, second by Mr. McKeever, to accept this as the first reading, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Uh, we'll refer Resolution Two-twenty-two dash twenty-eighteen to Health and Safety, Resolution Two-twenty-three dash twenty-eighteen to Health and Safety, Resolution Two-twenty-four dash twenty-eighteen to Health and Safety, and Resolution Number Two-twenty-five dash twenty-eighteen to Finance Committee. This is, uh, the time we have public participation, any member of the general public may present their input or comments on legislation that has been read for the first time. Anyone to address counsel? None? We don't need a recess, do we?
No.
Okay. Committee reports on pending legislation, Health and Safety Committee?
Resolution Two-twenty-two dash two thousand eighteen for ODOT U.S. thirty repaving, Health and Safety is favorable. Resolution Two-twenty-three dash two thousand eighteen, ODOT State Route Four repaving, Health and Safety is favorable. And Resolution Two-twenty-four, two thousand eighteen for average festival street closures, Health and Safety is favorable.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee is seeking Resolution Two-twenty-five dash two thousand eighteen for the School Resource Office.
Okay, I need a remotion to accept these reports?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Coe, second by Mr. Wireball, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no, motion passed. For further consideration of pending legislation, for the second and third reading of proposed Resolution Number Two-twenty-two dash twenty-eighteen, which is the ODOT U.S. thirty repaving, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare it an emergency?
So moved. Second.
McKeever?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Truka?
Yes.
Sack?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Resolution Number Two-twenty-two, twenty-eighteen.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed Resolution Two-twenty-two dash twenty-eighteen?
So moved.
Second.
Wireball?
Yes.
Sack?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Truka?
Yes.
Resolution Two-twenty-two dash twenty-eighteen is duly adopted. For the second and third reading of proposed Resolution Two-twenty-three dash twenty-eighteen, which is the ODOT State Route Four repaving, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare it an emergency?
So moved. Second.
McKeever?
Yes.
Truka?
Yes.
Sack?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Resolution Number Two-twenty-three, twenty-eighteen.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed Resolution Two-twenty-three dash twenty-eighteen?
So moved. Second.
Wireball?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Truka?
Yes.
Sack?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Resolution Two-twenty-three dash twenty-eighteen is duly adopted. For the second and third reading of proposed Resolution Two-twenty-four dash twenty-eighteen, uh, which is the Broadworth Festival Street Closures, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text?
So moved. Second.
McKeever?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Myers?
Absane.
Wireball?
Yes.
Truka?
Yes.
Sack?
Yes.
Coe?
Absane.
Resolution Number Two-twenty-four, twenty-eighteen.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed Resolution Two-twenty-four dash twenty-eighteen?
So moved. Second.
Shaw?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Absane.
Wireball?
Yes.
Truka?
Yes.
Sack?
Yes.
Coe?
Absane.
Resolution Number Two-twenty-four dash twenty-eighteen is duly adopted. For the second and third reading of proposed Resolution Two-twenty-five dash twenty-eighteen, which is for School Resource Officer, uh, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules and waive the reading of the caption and text?
So moved. Second.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Truka?
Yes.
Sack?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Resolution Number Two-twenty-five, twenty-eighteen.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed Resolution Two-twenty-five dash twenty-eighteen?
So moved. Second.
Wireball?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Truka?
Yes.
Sack?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Resolution Two-twenty-five dash twenty-eighteen is duly adopted. We'll make a note in there too, that the reason for the abstentions, that both of you are very involved with the Broadworth Festival.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay, any unfinished business this evening? With that, we'll move on to new and miscellaneous business. Uh, Friday, May the fourth, the Humane Society of Crawford County's Putting on the Dog Charity Auction is from six to ten at Pickwick Place, its cost is twelve fifty. Friday, May the fourth, is the first, uh, sunset movie at Schein's Art Park, it's at eight P.M., eight-thirty, it is free. Darkish. Uh, bring a chair, uh, they're going to be, uh, vendors there selling.
There should be some vendors.
Okay, thank you. Uh, you received the Treasurers' Report at last meeting for March of twenty-eighteen, I need a motion to accept and file that report?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Mr. Myers, to accept the Treasurers' Report for March of twenty-eighteen, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no, motion passed. Police Chiefs not with us this evening, Fire Chief is not with us this evening. I need a motion to accept the City Officers' Reports.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Coe, second by Mr.
Shaw.
Shaw, to accept the City Officers' Reports, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no, motion passed. This is where we have visitors' input regarding reports of standing or special committees and of city officers. Anyone wish to address counsel this evening? No one? Moving on, for consideration of proposed legislation for the first time.
Uh, we have four pieces of legislation, they are all resolutions, uh, Resolution Number Two-twenty-two, twenty-eighteen, we, um, I'll read through Section, uh, Three on this. The following resolution enacted by the City of Visirus in Crawford County, Ohio, here and after referred to as the City in the manner of the stated described project and declaring an emergency, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Visirus, State of Ohio, two-thirds of all members elected thereto concurring, Section One, Project Description, PID Number seven-seven-four-eight-zero, whereas the State has identified the need for the described project. To perform resurfacing of U.S. Route Thirty in both directions from Oldhampton Highway to zero-point-zero-eight miles west of Stetson Road, all of the Visirus bypass will be resurfaced. In addition, there will be a small section of State Route Ninety-eight resurfaced in this project from the North Corporation Limit of Visirus to zero-point-twenty-two miles southwest of Beach Grove Road. If this project is currently res- uh, scheduled for the twenty-nineteen construction season, now therefore be it ordained by the City of Visirus in Crawford County, Ohio, Section Two Consent Statement, being in the public interest, the City gives consent to the Director of Transportation to complete the above-described project, and Section Three, the Cooperation Statement, the City shall cooperate with the Director of Transportation in the above-described project as follows. One, the City gets consent for the above improvement. Two, no funds are required from the City except that the City agrees to assume and bear one-hundred percent of the total cost for adding construction items requested by the City, and not necessary for the improvement as determined by the State and Federal Highway Administration, that is referred back to Health and Safety. Resolution Number Two-twenty-three, twenty-eighteen, um, I will read, um, through, uh, Section Three on this as well. Uh, the following resolution enacted by the City of Visirus in Crawford County, Ohio, here and after referred to as the City in the manner of the stated described project and declaring an emergency, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Visirus, State of Ohio, two-thirds of all members elected thereto concurring, Section One, Project Description, PID Number one-oh-one-zero-one-three-five-six, whereas the State has identified the need for the described project. City of Visirus Urban Paving, the purpose of this project is to perform pavement repairs and resurface a state route in the City of Visirus, CRA State Route Four, six-point-seven-two, the South Corporation Line to eight-point-four-five, which is South Standeski Avenue. Construction is tentatively scheduled to begin in the summer of twenty-nineteen, now therefore be it ordained by the City of Visirus in Crawford County, Ohio, Section Two Consent Statement, being in the public interest, the City gives consent to the Director of Transportation to complete the above-described project. Section Three Cooperation Statement, the City shall cooperate with the Director, the Director of Transportation for the portion of this project within the Visirus Corporation Limit as follows. One, ODOT agrees to assume and bear one-hundred percent of the preliminary engineering costs and environmental studies costs. Two, ODOT agrees to assume and bear eighty percent of the roadway construction and construction engineering costs. Three, the City agrees to assume and bear twenty percent of the roadway construction and construction engineering costs. Four, ODOT and the City agree that the following roadway construction items are eligible for eighty percent ODOT, twenty percent City funding, pavement planning, asphalt overlay, treatment of shoulder, height adjustment to existing guardrail, pavement markings temporary and fast dry adjustments to catch basins, manholes, valve box boxes, et cetera, mailbox supports and approaches, and work zone signs. Five, ODOT agrees to assume and bear one-hundred percent of the bridge related costs. Six, the City further agrees to pay one-hundred percent of the cost of the following construction items, pavement repair, partial and full depth, curbs, curb ramps, sidewalks, city-owned signs, guardrail replacement efficient existing and required new locations, and those items requested by the City which are determined to be unnecessary by the State or Federal Highway Administration for the remainder of this project, and Fund Seven, a preliminary cost estimate for the City's share of this project is one-hundred-and-eleven thousand dollars for construction costs and forty-five, four thousand five hundred dollars for construction and engineering inspection, that is referred back to Health and Safety. Resolution Number Two-twenty-four, twenty-eighteen, authorizing and directing the Public Service Safety Director of the City of Visirus, Ohio, to ban all vehicular trafficking, including bicycles and stateboards, except authorized emergency personnel, for the twenty-eighteen Visirus Broadworth Festival according to the schedule set forth herein, further authorizing and directing the Chief of Police to make necessary arrangements for the rerouting of traffic on federal, state, local highways and roadways, that's referred back to Health and Safety. And Fund Resolution Number Two-twenty-five, twenty-eighteen, authorizing and directing the Mayor of the City of Visirus, Ohio, to accept sixty thousand forty dollars from the Visirus School District for the appointment of a second School Resource Officer from the Visirus Police Department in the School District, and that is referred back to plan.
Uh, I need a motion to accept this as the first reading.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Myers, second by Mr. McKeever, to accept this as the first reading, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no, motion passed. Uh, we'll refer Resolution Two-twenty-two dash twenty-eighteen to Health and Safety, Resolution Two-twenty-three dash twenty-eighteen to Health and Safety, Resolution Two-twenty-four dash twenty-eighteen to Health and Safety, and Resolution Number Two-twenty-five dash twenty-eighteen to Finance Committee. This is, uh, the time we have public participation, any member of the general public may present their input or comments on legislation that has been read for the first time. Anyone to address counsel? None? We don't need a recess, do we?
No.
Okay. Committee reports on pending legislation, Health and Safety Committee?
Resolution Two-twenty-two dash two thousand eighteen for ODOT U.S. thirty repaving, Health and Safety is favorable. Resolution Two-twenty-three dash two thousand eighteen, ODOT State Route Four repaving, Health and Safety is favorable. And Resolution Two-twenty-four, two thousand eighteen for average festival street closures, Health and Safety is favorable.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee is seeking Resolution Two-twenty-five dash two thousand eighteen for the School Resource Office.
Okay, I need a remotion to accept these reports?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Coe, second by Mr. Wireball, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no, motion passed. For further consideration of pending legislation, for the second and third reading of proposed Resolution Number Two-twenty-two dash twenty-eighteen, which is the ODOT U.S. thirty repaving, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare it an emergency?
So moved. Second.
McKeever?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Truka?
Yes.
Sack?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.[1626.31]
Myers?
Yes.
Resolution Number Two Twenty-two, 2018.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed Resolution Two Twenty-two dash 2018?
So moved.
Second.
Wireball?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Foote?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Trucco?
Yes.
Resolution Two Twenty-two dash 2018 is duly adopted. For the second and third reading of proposed Resolution Two Twenty-three dash 2018, which is the ODOT State Route Four repaving, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare it an emergency?
So moved. Second.
McKeever?
Yes.
Trucco?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Resolution Number Two Twenty-three, 2018.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed Resolution Two Twenty-three dash 2018?
So moved. Second.
Wireball?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Trucco?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Resolution Two Twenty-three dash 2018 is duly adopted. For the second and third reading of proposed Resolution Two Twenty-four dash 2018, which is the Broadworth Festival Street closures, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text?
So moved. Second.
McKeever?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Myers?
Absane.
Wireball?
Yes.
Trucco?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Foote?
Absane.
Resolution Number Two Twenty-four, 2018.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed Resolution Two Twenty-four dash 2018?
So moved. Second.
Shaw?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Absane.
Wireball?
Yes.
Trucco?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Foote?
Absane.
Shaw?
Yes.
Resolution Number Two Twenty-five, 2018.
Do I hear a motion to suspend the rules and waive the reading of the caption and text?
So moved. Second.